Okay. Please stand for the invocation followed by the pledge to the United States and Texas flags. Reverend Pullum, good morning.
Good morning. Shall we pray? Oh God, our Father, by heaven and father, we come today to thank you. We thank you for this opportunity and this privilege. We thank you for this day, a wonderful day in South Texas. We ask you blessing upon, oh God, our city, our nation, our world, these county commissioners, and of course, New Oasis County. Oh God, we ask that you guide these commissioners as they are challenged, oh God, to make life better for those of us who live in this area. Oh God, in this season of Thanksgiving, this season of reflecting on the goodness that you poured out our way, we just say thank you. Thank you for all that you have done for us, for all that you're doing right now. Oh God, give us the kind of love that we need. God, may we all join together and pray for peace for our nation and for our world. We ask all of these and all blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to the United States flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Thank you. Thank you Reverend Pullum. Merry Christmas to you, sir. Okay. Okay, we began the meeting this morning at 9:20. It's, today is the 16th of December. We're meeting in the New Oasis County Commissioners' courtroom and the New Oasis County Courthouse. I'd like to certify that all members of the court are present and that we have a quorum. I'd like to call for approval of the minutes of November 13th, 18th, and December the 2nd, please. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. See no concerns, criticisms? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign, please. Let's go down front, commissioners, if we can. We have two wonderful presentations to make this morning, and let's go down there and do that, please. Terry Gonzalez has decided that she needs some other thing, something else to do for the next few years. So after 37 years of service to New Oasis County, she's retiring. Terry, won't you please come up this morning and please, if you will? Congratulations. Please, come join the commissioners. Terry, I'm gonna let you hold this so you can talk. But on behalf of the court, and all of your friends, and all of your fellow employees, we really want to thank you. 37 years of service to this county is magnificent. You're gonna be missed. You've been a wonderful employee, and thank you very, very much for your service. Thank you. Tyler tells me there's a watch in here.
How many acres does it take to open?
Well, at least two. But your watch is here. I looked, it is here. And we do appreciate everything that you've done. Would you please introduce anyone, or do you have any comments this morning? Use this.
I want to thank everyone for being here. Thank you.
Judge, you want to say something? Would you like to, you need to? Come on up, please. I know, I know you're here for a reason, and here's your watch, Terry, and thank you so much. Please, Judge.
I, I, I'm speaking on behalf of, excuse me, of Ann, as her real boss, and Terry, you happen to be my clerk for pretty close to 20 years in the courtroom, so she's an excellent employee. I'm sure that the district clerk's office and Ann are going to miss her because she's got a wealth of information that she's taking with her. So on behalf of our office, we wish her the best. Thank you for giving me the honor.
Thank you, Judge.
Commissioners? I seldom, and very seldom, do I see this lady out in the hallways or visiting with anybody, so which speaks to the unsung heroes that make our, the work behind the scenes to make this a fully functioning courthouse. And I want to congratulate you for your 37 years that you've, that you've helped run, and I guess they've all been spent in the same, in the judicial system, and so it wouldn't be the same, and we would, we would not be in, in as good a position as we are in if it hadn't been for your work.
Terry, thank you. Good luck. Merry Christmas to you. Thank you, thank you. Now, Ruth is, is leaving us. Not 37 years, no, but nine years of wonderful service to dispute resolution services. In our life here in the courthouse, and Judge, as you well know, a lot of things can be worked out if you have the right kind of people to help you work them out. And Ruth has been that kind of help to us, and she's, has been a great mediator-type person, helping us get over some things to keep us out of the courts, which is always good. So Ruth, you're going to be missed. We thank you for your service, and congratulations.
First of all, I would like to thank each of you, Judge and Commissioners, for your service to our county, because the few times I've been in your offices, I have seen that, that you all help all of your constituents, and the amount of time and dedication and care that each of you gives to our county to make our county a better place is truly inspiring. And if more people knew this, they, they appreciate you, and they would appreciate you 100 times more if they dreamed how much hard work you put into this. Now, as far as mediation goes, mediation saves the county money, and it also gives the participants the opportunity to save not only the financial cost of going to court, but also the emotional cost. There's a huge emotional cost when people have to go to court. And so mediation embraces the most idealistic aspects of the court system. And so we have fabulous volunteers. We're going to be having our 40-hour basic mediation training in March, and we would invite any or all of you to come and sit in on any or all of the training, because the more you know about mediation, the better the whole system is. And so we, again, we thank you for your service to our county and for your, your support of dispute resolution.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna miss you.
We're gonna miss you.
I'm gonna miss you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Morning, Laura.
Good morning.
One of the things that has happened in the last few weeks has been the release of the long-awaited study on flood maps and flood plains and the effects of the changes the federal flood program is making on areas of New Oasis County, the city of Corpus Christi, and the effects it's going to have on construction in the county, insurance in the county in certain floodplain areas. This morning, we're going to have a, we're going to go back into a workshop format, and I've asked Glenn Sullivan and Tony, whoever's gonna make the presentation, to give the court and the public an update on where they think we are or might be headed with the new floodplain designations and the floodplain maps. There's still a ways to go. I know the city of Corpus Christi got some of this briefing at their council meeting in the last couple of weeks. This is for, principally for the unincorporated areas of New Oasis County and, and the entire area itself that is, that we have governance over. So I'm gonna ask that we recess the regular meeting at 9:30, and that we go into a workshop format for the purpose of receiving a presentation from the Department of Public Works related to the new federal emergency agent, management agency flood, excuse me, floodplain maps. Glenn?
Thank you, sir, and good morning. As, as the judge pointed out, the FEMA maps, draft maps, are out there. The public can get access to them now. We've left some information with y'all, and kind of a 30,000-foot overview map, and then some literature that goes with it. And the map update, FEMA started doing the map updates, I think, back in 2006 for all the coastal counties. The, the old maps date back to the 1980s, and their analytical methods have changed significantly over the years. So FEMA, again, and back, starting back in 2006, took it upon themselves to start re-studying the coastal counties in Texas, specifically the storm surge that occurs not only out on the island, but up, in our case, in the Oyster River and the Osso Creek. I won't bother to, to read through all of this, but they are using the latest technologies to come up with the revised maps. Like I said, they, they've refined their, their surge analysis. They've gone into new levee analysis. There is a levee in the city of Bishop, and there's a levee in Corpus Christi, and they've been working on both of those. For the rural areas where, and again, you, you, we have given y'all a large-scale map that you can tell from it where the flood plains have increased or decreased. There are some of those. But west of Bishop added, added some to the flood plains. East of Driscoll, the Fiesta Ranch subdivision that you've heard us talk about from time to time, it is now included in that. Tierra Verde 1 subdivision, which is a little west of Robstown. And of course, I, I think I've heard on the news, the city has been looking at areas around Greenwood, Staples, King's Crossing area, some of those areas were added. Again, our, our jurisdiction, if you will, is the rural areas out there. The map you have that we gave you is this map right here, and you can see the, what I'll call the salmon-colored areas. Those are where there was an increase in the flood zones. Now, in the rural areas, much of that is farmland, plowed fields, doesn't have a great effect on the housing that's out there. What we, what we found out, we kind of drilled down, and we'll show you some of the interactive maps here in a little bit, but we went through some of the subdivisions, our subdivisions in the rural areas, and you have an increase of maybe 250 to 300 houses that were added. Now, at the same time, again, in the rural area, they, there's 42 houses out there that we've identified so far that are no longer considered in the floodplain. So there's a little bit of balance. Like I said, we're looking at maybe 300 houses right now, and we'll talk a bit, a little bit about outreach.
Do we have locations on those, Glenn, that you can?
Yes, sir. With, with the maps that they have now, the interactive maps, and again, we'll show you what's available on the internet, we can drill down to the, to the, to the lot or the house levels. We couldn't do it on the old maps because they were just big maps of the size you've got there.
But do we have, you, you reference these, what, 300 homes, you said, or?
Right, right.
Do we have an idea exactly where those might be, in a ballpark area, so to speak?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Are you gonna get to that?
I didn't give y'all a copy, but that's a sheet that we worked with, and it's, what it is, it's a list of subdivisions. For instance, Fiesta Ranch that we just talked about has 80 houses that we're picking up. The Tierra Verde Unit 1 that was added has 13 houses, or plus 17, 17 houses. So we can get down to that level with these maps.
At some point, it'd be helpful to see a map showing those locations.
Yeah, well.
And I, I don't need to drill down to the lot, but I'm talking about, you know, something like this that has, okay, if there's 25 houses in that area, we'd like to, you know?
Ah, we, we can probably generate that. I don't see why not.
Okay, thank you.
To give you an idea of, that's the current flood, regulatory floodplain. That happens to be the city of Robstown, right in the center of it. Tierra Verde 1 is a little bit to the west, and that's what the, the new one is. If, if, I don't know if you can see it at that scale, but it includes now all of Tierra Verde. A little bit of change inside the city of Robstown. Same thing, this is the Driscoll area, the current floodplain map, and you'll see a big difference. That's the new one. It picks up all of Fiesta Ranch and a lot to the east of, east of Driscoll. Again, that's where it started. That's where it is now. There's some areas inside the city limits of Driscoll that were not in before that they are now. So, again, as we all know, we now have the preliminary maps. We have the full set of maps in hand. On November the 16th, at the American Bank Center, well, let me back up. On November the 16th, FEMA was here in this courtroom, held a, held a meeting, and it invited all the, all the incorporated cities. It was kind of their way to say, here are the maps now, they're available for the public to take a look at. There is an open house scheduled for January the 14th, 2016, at the American Bank Center. We will have a table there. We will have our folks there. Once that meeting is over with, FEMA will open up at least a 90-day window for anybody, whether it's government entities or the members of the public, to send them comments or ask FEMA to look at some changes. In other words, if you think your house is higher and shouldn't be in the floodplain, that's an appeals period. After they resolve all those appeals, and we don't know, we don't have a good timeline on how long it might take them, but once all those appeals are resolved, then FEMA will, they won't be preliminary maps anymore. They, they will adopt them, if you will. And at that point, New Oasis County would have six months to adopt the new maps and put them into effect. Until that happens, as far as insurance purposes is concerned, the insurance folks will continue to use the old maps up until the time that FEMA adopts them. Obviously, we will come back to court to get the court to formally adopt the maps, and at the same time, our, our rules, or I say our rules, the court's floodplain regulations, we will ask you to adopt a new set of those. We already have been working on them with FEMA, and we will bring those to court at that time and adopt them all, all this one package. Now, if I could, Tony?
Glenn, I don't, I don't see Pictoneela here anywhere, number five or, or one or two, but then there were one of the, probably the worst on the, during the flooding. All alone, 665 and 24 and 67, they were all pretty much underwater. Tierra Grande, you know, I don't see any, any color in Tierra Grande, but they were pretty much underwater too, but.
Yeah. Well, again, the, the big map that we gave you is a big higher view. We will certainly, if you're concerned about those areas, we'll, we'll take a look at them.
Sure.
Now.
Show the webpage first.
Yeah, yeah. Go to, go to the internet. We'll, we'll show you what's available online, and by the way, we're, we'll have a link from the Public Works, the New Oasis County Public Works website. We'll have a link to all these maps. What this is, is a map that, that is the key to all the individual maps. Can you click on one, call one? From that key, then you can go into the individual maps, bigger scale maps.
While you're doing that, the, the effects of being in the floodplain are what? What, what happens if you're in the floodplain?
Well, if you have a mortgage, then your, your mortgage company will require you to have flood insurance. And of course, even if you don't have a, a mortgage, it might, might behoove one to, to purchase the flood insurance. But that's, that's what the immediate effect is on the property owners. Now.
Are they gonna be required to have it, or is it something that?
If you have a mortgage, your mortgage company undoubtedly will require you to, to carry that insurance. Now, if you own your house outright, that's your own personal decision.
We've had a number of flooding events where FEMA has come in after the event and evaluated the damage to the various properties, and, and if the insurer, if the person has not purchased flood insurance, but have been warned they're in the floodplain, is there some type of retribution, or whatever the word is, for those people? Because after a while, the FEMA people are gonna get tired of paying for flood damage in the floodplain if people are not going to insure it. Is that a legal responsibility of the county to make sure they know where they are and what they're doing?
Well, and, and that's one of the things that, we need to do some outreach. Again, we will be at the meeting in January at the American Bank Center, but in the rural area, it's so scattered out that my plan would?
It was my understanding, and when we met with FEMA at their, at the, where they were set up there at the fairgrounds, they said that once they're placed in a system, that's indication that they're in a floodplain area, and they should get insurance after this help. Once they come back again, they reapply for assistance again, and they're kicked in, and they're in the system, they're not gonna help them as much as they did last time. That's what my understanding was with FEMA.
Yeah, yeah. If, if, if your property has multiple claims, then there does come a point that they will, they will cut, cut that off. Given the technology that we can drill down into now, again, because of the scattered nature of the rural area, what I would like to do is, A, send a letter to all the property owners that are affected. Again, we're looking at 300 and something properties. We could easily send letters to every one of those property owners.
That's, again, that's my question, Glenn. Do we have any maps here that, that shows this court, kind of where we're talking about those 300 homes are? I mean, people are gonna ask us after this meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
Here's media wants to know. I mean, this is a 35,000-foot view that gives us very little information.
Well, and I, yes, sir, I understand that.
Show the webpage and show what we have on the webpage. This is probably the best tool to do what Commissioner Pusley's asking for. If I may. This one, this one here, you can punch an ad. Matter of fact, I'll, I'll show, I'll punch an address in, on this one. This is, this is our county map. Actually, I'm putting my old address.
I got an outdoor swimming pool.
There's a case, I drilled in with a, with a known address in a subdivision in Corpus Christi that is now in a floodplain that wasn't before that I was aware of. So that shows, that shows the exact parcels that are, that are in the floodplain.
What I was looking more for is, you know, a regional kind of map of New Oasis County that would show some bubble maps, if you will, of where the concentration of homes are.
And we can, we can generate those for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
But there are the houses right there. Well, those are houses right there in red. I mean, those are houses, right?
Yes, yes, sir. That, that's an aerial photograph of a subdivision on the.
Yeah.
That's all in the floodplain. All of that's in the floodplain.
What's in, in the red or pink, is it all in the floodplain?
Like, here's the current floodplain. It wasn't there, and here's, here's the new one. It's there now.
It, it just happens to be an area that was not in the floodplain under the old maps. It is under the new maps.
And this is great, but I think what Commissioner Pusley's saying too, which makes sense, is if, if there's a way to be able to say, here's, here's a list of the addresses. I mean, I know you can, this is great. You can go in, type your address in, you can check, but if there's, and I don't, if there's a way to do that that's not too encumbrance.
For the rural area, that's what we intended to have. And again, my, my plan would be to send out a letter in English and Spanish to everybody that's in the rural area that is now in the floodplain that was not previous. So we can start a dialogue with them if that's what they need. Again, we have the full-scale maps, which is, what, 50 of them?
And you can, you can also expand by doing it to senior centers. Have an orientation at the senior center.
Sure, we can, we can do that.
Yeah, good.
But, but none of that you need to do, do you till they approve the final map, right? Or you want to preempt that and say you may be in the floodplain?
I, I would like to do it with these preliminary maps. That gives an individual a chance to contest it if that's what they wish.
Okay, good. It's a good idea. It's a good idea.
Again, we will do that. It'll be after the FEMA meeting in January. Because that's when they will open it up for comments, and, and we'll supply them. We, we have an address where you, if, if you have any comments or have any questions about the maps, it goes directly to FEMA Region 6, which is in Denton, Texas, and we have that address and your contact information. And that's, that's what we would like to do. Again, the internet, all these links would be available off, off of our Public Works website.
Glenn, if you get, if you can do this letter, if you got extra ones, let me, I'd like to help at the senior center there in Bishop and.
Sure, absolutely.
And City Hall will give them as they pay utilities, they'll give them out also.
Sure, sure. For, for the, especially for the Colonias, I think that's a good way to address it. We could even, if, again, it's not a huge number, we could actually go out and, and door-to-door and, and pass those things out, realizing that there's some people out there that are renting and they're not, not owners. We run into this a lot. So we, we can do that, and that's kind of where we are, if you have any more questions.
Glenn, thank you. Commissioner, I know when you look, Commissioner Ortiz, when, when you look at Robstown. Commissioner, I know when you look, Commissioner Ortiz, when, when you look at Robstown, almost all the city of Robstown is in the floodplain and it was before, and it still is, with the fairgrounds and the outlet mall are still in the floodplain. So, that, that, we certainly, I know they know that, but, but that certainly needs to be brought to their attention and, and I guess the point of contact for the county is Public Works.
Yes, sir.
And, and you all will have the ability to direct people into the computer where to go find and also provide that information for a person to, should they come see for Public Works.
Again, we'll have these maps, these interactive maps available. Anybody can get them online if they want to see hard copies of the FEMA maps. We have those. If any of y'all would like to keep in your office a complete set of maps, we can certainly run one.
Good.
I think what, Your Honor, for our, our January 6 meeting, what I'd like to see is what I'm talking about is a, a map that will give us an indication of the neighborhoods that are going to be directly impacted by these new FEMA maps if they're approved. I mean, if you look at the Robstown floodplain map that's on there now, there's lots of farmland that's within that and that's important for people to know with respect to development. But, you know, constituents are going to be calling us, asking us, is my neighborhood impacted?
Yeah.
And I don't know that unless I've got the information to give to them.
Well, you get that for us.
If you want to partner also with the promotoras, you know, to help out, you know, we can do that too, so let us know.
Okay, great.
You know, if you're going to go to door-to-door, we know the promotoras with AHA can do it.
Oh, well, that's, that's good.
Glenn, are there, are, are, is there floodplains? Is there a, a different set of maps that shows the floodways?
Where they, where FEMA has designated floodways, they're shown on these, on these maps.
Okay.
There's, there's some areas that they designate floodways and others that they, they have and, but they are all shown on the map.
Questions or concerns, comments by the public? I see John Michael sitting there. John's been intimately involved in flood planning for Nuasis County and Drainage. John, you want to make any comments? Naismith Engineering's been our partner out there for a long time on Drainage.
He's got 34 years. And, and thank you, Judge. Commissioner, you brought up a good point, floodways. You know, we always think of these maps, talk about floodplain. Floodplains basically says you live in a floodplain, you have to have flood insurance. Floodway is a different animal. If you want to build in a floodway, you have to go through an extensive process to get that permitted because that is how FEMA sets aside property and says, you don't build here. Not now, not tomorrow, not ever. And so, if you do, you need to prove through a very extensive computer analysis to FEMA why it's okay to build in that floodway. My caution to you, and I, I brought this up with Glenn as well, and I brought an example map that I can share with you at, at a later date, is that when I heard that the new maps were available, and by the way, all you have to do is Google Risk Map 6. It'll pop up, you type in Texas, you type in Nuasis County, boom, you're there. All of the maps are available, Risk Map 6. Those are draft maps for Nuasis County. Most of the other counties around here, their maps have been adopted. They went through an extensive process of reviewing the maps. My caution to you and my caution to Glenn was, don't take these draft maps as gospel. There's, there's some things in there that quite frankly, aren't right. And, you know, somebody told me once, if you want to know where it floods, ask a farmer. I never forgot that. Because farmers know where it floods and knows where it historically floods. So, you know, you can have all the tools available to you, all the fancy GIS topo, years of training as an engineer, but, you know, if you know intuitively that this area floods and it's not shown in a floodplain, then you better be listening to that. So, I've just pulled up an example and one was in Robstown. You know, the old maps were done in 1984 with the technology of 1984, as Glenn mentioned. We have better technology today, much better technology, but it doesn't mean that the maps are necessarily right. Garbage in is garbage out. So, if you've got some kid just fresh out of school in, in Virginia, working for FEMA on a very limited budget, putting information in and generating a map out, it may not necessarily be correct. And I pulled this one up in Robstown that I knew was, probably was not going to be right. And sure enough, I pulled it up and I said, lordy, lordy, we have a problem here. So, I brought that to Steve's attention last week and to Glenn's attention and, and my point is, is that take your time making sure that the maps are correct. That's where you have to start first because, you know, going and sounding the alarm bells to all the citizens is, you know, you want to make sure you're, you're doing that after you, you feel a comfort level with the maps. And you're going to live with these maps for the next 30, 40 years, just like we did the old maps. So, my caution is, number one, make sure that the maps are right and that you're comfortable with them before you go to the public. I know that they're going to roll this out on January 14th, as Glenn told you. That's going to be the beginning of that process. And, and all the other counties went through this as well. It just, you need to, to really get in there and look at these maps and make sure that they make, they make sense. The floodway for Robstown goes right through the entire city of Robstown. Really? I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's correct. There's a new highway, I-69, built around it. It shows the floodway the same, the same distance on one side of the highway as the other. Well, I know that's not correct because the amount of water that gets under the highway is limited by the capacity of the box covers that are under it. Water doesn't flow, flow over I-69. It hasn't in the past and it won't now. So, there's some things with those maps that just inherently are not correct. You've got to get in there and find those things, contest that with FEMA, have them rerun that part of the model and bring it back to you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, talking about, I know there are some homes that are sitting right on top of that flood, flood wave, whatever you want to call it. Maybe that happened before FEMA, whatever, or maybe like you said, the maps, maybe at that time, they weren't mapped, but I know there are some homes, I mean, they're sitting right on top of that, the water, where the water flows. So, I don't know, how do we do with that, with those homes and would they have to be removed or it, once they're there, they're there, I guess?
Once they're there, they're there. You know, the, it's, this is a good news, bad news thing. If, under the old maps, if you had a home that was not shown in a floodplain, but it flooded routinely, you just dealt with that. You didn't have to buy flood insurance. That was, that was the problem. Well, the new maps, if, if you assume that they are correct and you have a house that's now in a floodplain, the bad news is, is you've got to buy flood insurance. The good news is, you know you've got to have flood insurance. And that, Judge, you brought that issue up with FEMA coming back time and time and time again. Well, if you don't buy flood insurance and your house is in a floodplain, then shame on you. That's really the bottom line.
Well, I guess.
Nobody may like the, the news that you bring to them, but if, the fact is, is that the map is accurate and your home is in a floodplain, you have to buy flood insurance.
So, that thing gives a farming you when you sold it, but the, the person who bought it didn't know that, but.
Right.
And that's what happened.
So, I have two questions, John. How, how do we determine that and how are these maps different than the one your firm created for us here just a few years ago? Have, have we overlaid those two to see, because I know y'all did extensive work.
Glenn, I just talked about that. Take, that would be one of the first things I would do, is take the model that we put together for you all about five or six years ago, overlay that onto the new map, see where there's, where it jives good, particularly along Petania Creek and some of the major outfalls. There were some areas, big gaps between our maps and the FEMA maps that FEMA has now picked up. That's good. I'm not sure that they got it quite right, but I, I would start with what you have from past reports and studies, overlay those and then, again, go through, just work your way across the county and just say, look, I know that this is not correct, maybe involves some developers and engineers that do work in the county that, you know, invite them in, sit down, look at the maps, determine, you know, are you comfortable with this? A lot of it is just.
The only way we're going to be able to argue with them is if we have something to argue from.
Yeah. You're going to have to go back to them and say, we want you to verify these specific areas because we don't think they're right for the following reasons. And then they'll go through a process, come back and do that. It may have been the modeler didn't know that I-69 that was built in 2003, 2004 was there. Wasn't on the 2000, I mean, the 1984 maps because it wasn't there. That was, that has been recently built. But when you look at the proposed map, it looks like they didn't acknowledge that the new highway's there. So, those are the kinds of things that you can go back to FEMA and say, we have a question with these areas, please relook at those. Or send us your data file so that we can verify that you've got that correct.
So, are they, are these new maps from FEMA going to be like, you know, in the, the old maps, everybody lived in a floodplain. You know, it was A, B, C, D or however they.
Yeah, right.
And if you were in A, you didn't have to really worry, floodplain A was okay. If you were in C or D, different story. Is that how they're going to do these?
Yeah, the, the new maps have a, and I know Glenn didn't have time to go over that with you, there is a, there's a little, it's all color-coded and it, there's a designation so you can go in there and, and literally do this on your computer, pull it up, pull your house up and it'll give you that designation. You check the legend, see where you're at. You know, are you in a floodway, are you in a floodplain, you in a 500-year floodplain? That's a different issue than 100-year floodplanes. Velocity zones and some other things. So, it's, that part is pretty much the same, although the, the designations have been broken up into more pieces.
So, what Glenn, what I hear John saying is, are we equipped in the county to do that kind of analysis of every one of these places?
Yeah.
He is.
Well, I can help Glenn go through some of that stuff just because I've been dealing with it for 34 years and, and, and that's what I do for a living. But, you know, if Glenn needs my help, I'll sit down with Glenn and, and kind of give him my ideas.
Well, if we're going to need to involve someone and we need to be talking about what, what costs we have associated with this and everything else.
Yes, sir. If, if, if we have to get down and, and do some, some real hydraulic analysis, then we'll have to call on.
Well, it sounds like we're going to have to do that.
Sounds like.
We're going to be able to defend or argue on behalf of the constituents of this county. We're going to have to have data to be able to do that. We just can't go in there and say, hey, we don't agree with your maps. And they're going to say, well, what part don't you agree with?
Yeah, exactly.
Got to have some backup.
Why don't you guys get your heads together and bring us back something? I'm not trying to hire John this morning, but, but, but we, he brings up some very valid points and, and I've had a number of discussions with Danielle as we've gone through this FEMA stuff over the last two or three months. And we do have, all of us know this, we do have much more of a potential, I don't like the word liability, but responsibility and, and it's, it's incumbent upon us, as it is with the city. I, I see our city folks back there this morning and I know they've had that briefing for their council. And, and just accepting, I'm from the federal government, I'm here to help you is not the right approach. We do need to take a look at this. So, guys, get your heads together. You might even want to involve the city of Corpus Christi zone because they, we still all have one county here, so. So, help us figure this out, please, and bring something back to the court within a reasonable amount of time. And if we can get what Commissioner Pusley's asking for, Glenn, that's a starting point.
Sure.
I want to thank you. This is good. This is a great discussion. And, and John, I'm glad you're here. Anyone else have any comment this morning, public comment or anything else? The attempt here is to begin to inform the public and particularly the public that resides outside the city limits, that resides outside the city limits of Corpus Christi, that we are taking a very proactive stance and we're going to be getting better at this as we go along. Glenn, do you have anything else? Tony, anything else?
No, sir.
Good. Okay. How about the singing frogs? You okay?
We're swimming.
Okay.
Swimming and singing.
This, this, this inside joke, Commissioner Ortiz's house has a little water under it every now and then. He can always tell when it's raining because the frogs start singing, so.
Every October.
Okay, thank you, guys. We appreciate your attention and help. John, again, thank you for being here.